Pledge by Commissioner Bush Booker.
Please join me in prayer. Our Father in Heaven, once again we come before you thankful for a blessed day in the Golden Isles. We are very fortunate to be able to live in such a beautiful part of your creation. Please guide us in our deliberations this evening. Watch over us as we conduct the county's work and once again protect those who protect us. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Public comment, period. We have one speaker tonight. Ms. Frazier?
I was expecting Mr. Smith first. Good evening, Honorable Commissioners. I stand tonight to speak about a problem in one neighborhood, but that one neighborhood is symbolic of the problems that so many of us face throughout Glenn County. The Harrington subdivision has not been properly planned at the comprehensive level. It has significant drainage and stormwater problems, and these are the result of a man-made error. It is an error by the county's Department of Community Development exacerbated by developers seeking to make quick money off high home values on the island. Developments like Captain's Cove, Tabby Place, Village Creek Way have materially altered the watershed sub-basin for the Harrington community in the last 15 years. If you look at the topographical maps, you will see that a natural steam stream has been bulldozed. The water that went down that natural stream did not just disappear. It went on to neighboring properties. It is being sent in all directions without a planned conduit or outflow. This raises questions about whether Glenn County is in compliance with its MS-IV permit or even capable of being in compliance under the Federal Clean Water Act. Under the law, under the federal law, Glenn County must plan, maintain, and enforce a municipal stormwater sewer system. This is what is meant by MS-IV permit. Glenn County cannot passively fulfill its mandatory duties under the MS-IV permit. It cannot defer oversight to the DNR or to the Corps. It is the county's own responsibility under the MS-IV permit. Developments have been approved piecemeal without any assessment and review related to the county's obligations under this MS-IV permit. This is problematic because it passes the problem from one place to another. It raises potential liability of the county to the federal government. I for one don't want my taxes to go up to pay a fine by the federal government because the county didn't properly plan its stormwater system. The Community Development Department has a check-the-box rubber-stamp mentality rather than providing meaningful, comprehensive planning, especially on stormwater. I ask that the Board adopt a resolution to temporarily halt all development in the Harrington community and to engage an independent hydraulic and stormwater engineer to prepare a comprehensive stormwater plan for the Harrington subdivision and the watershed sub-basin that encompasses it. The entire watershed needs to be surveyed and reviewed. This analysis needs to address watershed prior to the subdivisions approved in the last 15 years and the changes to date. The independent stormwater engineer needs to be someone outside the county and not associated with coastal engineering consultants, Robert Civil Engineering, or any other engineer with a financial interest in developments in the community of Harrington. Our county engineer does not have the capacity to do it himself. After a comprehensive stormwater plan is developed for the Harrington subdivision, all parties should come back to the table and discuss how we are going to fix the drainage and stormwater problems. Turning a blind eye to these problems will damage your constituents and risks liability to the county. Good people are being flooded, and it will only get worse. I ask that you do what's right and admittedly is very hard. Pass a resolution for a comprehensive stormwater plan in the Harrington subdivision. Let everyone take a step back and catch their breath. Then let's all come to the table and talk meaningful solutions to development, drainage, and stormwater in this very special community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. First item on the agenda is community commission presentations and announcements, and Representative Don Hogan is going to present a proclamation. Representative Hogan, you have the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like for Mr. Usher to come up and say a few words, if he would, about the individual we're giving a proclamation to tonight because he's our supervisor and he speaks highly of her, so give you that opportunity.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, it's my pleasure tonight to bring Brittany Smith before you. She won Communications Officer of the Year for 2017 for the whole state of Georgia, and she received that award back in March at the Telecommunicators Conference in Columbus. Brittany is an exceptional trainer. She's young, but she wants to learn, and she beat out a bunch of other people around the state of Georgia. And so we're very thankful to have her caliber with us. So she's a very, much of an asset to Glenn County and of course to the 911 Center, and we appreciate Representative Hogan coming and giving this proclamation. We really appreciate that.
Thank you. Also Representative Jones signed the proclamation also. It was very beneficial in helping us get this. Commending, the resolution commending Brittany Smith upon winning the title of the Georgia Emergency Communication Officer of the Year and for other purposes, whereas Brittany Smith has served with honor and distinction as a 911 Communication Officer for Glenn County in Brunswick, Georgia, whereas she is honest, dedicated public servant who strives for excellence in all of her endeavors and whose primary concern is the welfare and safety of the citizens of Glenn County in Brunswick. Now therefore be resolved by the House of Representatives that the members of this body commend the care, courage, and sympathy and selfless dedication exhibited by Brittany Smith in carrying out the difficult duties of her vocation. Congratulate her upon winning this title of Georgia Emergency Communication Officer of the Year and express our utmost appreciation for having so purely and truly defined for others the measure of a public servant. Be it further resolved that the Clerk of the House of Representatives is authorized and directed to make an appropriate copy of this resolution available for distribution to Brittany Smith. In the House read and adopted, March the 27th, 2018, William L. Riley, Clerk at the Court. And I'd like for Representative Jones to say just a word or two. But I do appreciate what county employees do. If it were not for our employees, this county wouldn't run as smooth as it does. I was a county commissioner for a couple of terms, and I appreciate county employees very, very much.
Again, congratulations, Brittany. We're really proud of you. I think Brittany is just another example of some of the great people that are in our community and active in our community and do such great things. 911 operators is a, that is a tough, tough job. I mean, they get calls from "my cat's in the tree" to truly emergencies that there are needing a 911 response. So the operators are charged with dealing with a wide variety of situations and circumstances which I don't think I can even imagine, and probably most of us here can't, but it takes a special person with a special skill with the kind of attitude and temperament to be able to handle those things calmly and effectively and obviously ultimately take care of the emergency situation. So Brittany, just behalf of the House of Representatives, Representative Hogan and myself, we just congratulate you for winning this award at a statewide level and just we're so proud of you and representing Glenn County as you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brittany, Brittany Ditto from the County Commission as well. All right. All right. Go ahead. Come on up if they want us. All right. All right. Go ahead. You want to slide this way now so you can be in the picture? All right. Go ahead. 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 All right. Go ahead, Commissioner.
By the way, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Hogan, or excuse me, Mr. Hogan. Don, you can stick around for the meeting if you want to, sir.
I'll stay here, sir.
You can go out and assist at the 911 center. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I propose a motion to add an item to the consent agenda. I move to add item 10 to the consent agenda to approve a change order for the Glencoe Parkway Bridge Project to Underground Excavating Incorporated of Patterson, Georgia, in the amount of $55,830.30 with funding to be provided by the SPOS 5.
Okay, we have a motion to add item number 10. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of adding that motion to the consent agenda signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I propose to add a motion to add an item to the consent agenda. I move to add item 11 to the consent agenda to approve the letter of support for Coastal Outreach Academies Incorporated doing business as Coastal Outreach Soccer to accompany their grant application to the National Environmental Education Foundation at no cost to Glenn County.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of adding that motion to the consent agenda signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I propose to add a motion to add an item to the consent agenda. I move to add item 11 to the consent agenda to approve the letter of support for Coastal Outreach Academies Incorporated doing business as Coastal Outreach Soccer to accompany their grant application to the National Environmental Education Foundation at no cost to Glenn County.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of adding item number 11 to the consent agenda signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I propose a motion to add an item to the general business agenda. I move to add item 12 to the agenda to consider authorizing a payment up to $93,580.45 to ADS Construction for current construction efforts in the Tax Commissioner's Office and to JFK Architecture Incorporated for the design of the entire renovation effort with funding to be provided by the FY18 Capital Projects Fund.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of adding item number 12 to general business signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, Commissioners. All right. Public hearing items, land use.
Mr. Chairman, can I, is it, is it the time to pull an item off the consent agenda for discussion?
Let's get to the consent. We'll approve, you know, make that motion after we do the public hearing items for land use.
Got it.
Okay. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments will be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position and the time allocated. Your cooperation in the process will be greatly appreciated. Item number two, AB 3231, consider the application. AB 3231, consider the application for abandonment of portion of an unopened alley right away in Block 17 in the East Beach subdivision, St. Simon's Island. The property is behind 4311 10th Street. Michael Dyke, applicant, Mr. Andrews.
Commissioners, this is a request for an abandonment of a, one half of an open alleyway in the 17th block of East Beach. That's west of Bruce Drive. The photos on the slide show the area of the alleyway requested for abandonment. There's a, this shows a flag that is the center line of the alleyway and a flag that is the edge of the property. This will be a photo from the center line of the alleyway looking down the alleyway. This is the area requested for abandonment. This wooden fence is on the, in the right-of-way. It's the neighbor's wooden fence. It's in the right-of-way, not part of the abandonment area. This is a plat of the, that was submitted for the abandonment, a blow-up parcel four is the only area requested to be abandoned. This is the fence that was showing up on that, on the previous photo. Sorry. The information associated with this is East Beach dedication to the, to the county for public use. There's no improvements in the alley at this time. It's current, it's in its current use. It has been for several years. There's no evidence that we have of the alley being open for public use. The, it's, it could however be used for access to the adjacent parcels where it opened, and it would return to the tax rolls if it is abandoned. There were, am I reaching out for information and comments? The utility departments do not have any requests to hold out any accommodations for utilities. The drainage, there is not currently drainage in the alley, but on East Beach as well as other older subdivisions on the island, we're seeing development and growth occurring, making drainage issues where there haven't been. My recommendation is to hold out a drainage easement over this area. As this area grows, we may need that to accommodate drainage in the future. Right now, there is no plans to do any project work in that area. Did not receive any comments from the public to my office. The staff is recommending that the abandonment be approved with a drainage easement being conveyed to the county over the whole of the area. Alternative options, actions that the Board could take at this point be to deny the abandonment, approve the abandonment request with the owner conveying a drainage easement to the county, approve the abandonment request with the, with no drainage easement being retained and the owner conveying to the county a hold harmless agreement, or approve the abandonment request with no drainage easement or no hold, no hold harmless agreement. Staff's recommendation is to essentially number two, approve the abandonment with a drainage easement being conveyed to the county.
Okay, questions?
And the applicant is here to answer questions. I'm sorry.
Questions for staff.
All right. Okay, this is a public hearing item, and those wishing to speak in favor
of the application may do so now if the applicant, if you identify yourself and for the record and, go ahead.
Michael Dyke, I'm the applicant. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you very much. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Andrews and his staff for all the work they've done. This has been an ongoing process even before Mr. Murphy's, Commissioner Murphy's time, and we're here now, and I appreciate your attention and time. We are asking, we would like the option of no drainage easement, and the reason is with a drainage easement, we are not allowed by code to build a fence or anything else in the easement portion, if I'm correct with the code. So therefore, putting a drainage easement on, in effect, puts us back to where we were minus the plus that we're now paying on 800 or 600 or whatever square feet we're paying taxes. We still have to maintain the property, so it really has no real value to the homeowner if we're not allowed to put a fence or anything. And we have held off for the past two and a half, almost three years that we've owned the property, building any fencing or anything else in that land. And we would like, we have a small pet, we would like to be able to build a fence, and we would like to have it run outside and not get out. And we haven't done that yet, so we request that you look at our option of no drainage easement. We would be more than happy to give something back to the county should there be a problem with the drainage. We are in that section of the new FEMA flood maps where we are, good portion of this land is in the X zone, so we are in part of the highest property in, on East Beach. I don't know about the whole island, but at least on East Beach, if you look at the new FEMA maps, there is a big chunk that comes right through the middle of the property, which is the X zone, so drainage probably is not an issue as it is on some of the lower numbered streets or higher numbered streets, which where the land drops down and the water doesn't move quite as well. And I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for the applicant?
While we're on the topic, could I ask Mr. Andrews to come back? So, Paul, I understand his, his request, and that would not be terribly unusual in that area for people either with abandoned, unabandoned county property right away to have fences, correct?
That is correct.
So, and this gentleman has not put a fence up presently as an applicant did, say, a month or two ago?
Yes, sir.
Let's say we modify your recommendation, and let's say we allow him to, to take control of this, is it 10 by 50 piece of property, 500 square feet, something like, that's the usual, but it doesn't matter. But, but, and as he said, he's in a, in a very low-risk floodplain area. But let's say there was a problem. Wouldn't it be protocol at that point to, to ask him to take the fence down if there was a problem that prevented you from getting to that area to service other neighbors, or what would happen in that instance?
In the instance where a fence has been put up either in a drainage easement or in a right-of-way?
Right.
Yes, or the first step on projects is to, outside of an emergency situation, is to go in and let people know that work is being done, remove whatever encroachments they want from that area, or have it removed at the project and not replaced.
Right. So, so this is, this has really been dragging on, fellow Commissioners. This is one of the first properties I visited when I became Commissioner a year and four months ago, and so this is, and I understand Mr. Dyke's interest in having a fence for his dog. Would you feel strongly if we allowed him to get the abandonment and still be permitted to put up a fence?
Right now, there is no, there is no pressing need from the county.
Right.
Mr. Dyke is, just like he conveyed to y'all that he, if there was a problem, he would certainly be willing to talk to the county and be involved with the county about solving the problem. If it involved an easement at that time, he'd be willing to convey that easement.
Got it.
And I don't have any reason to, to say that he would. And right now, we don't have any project. We're trying to hold out for the future, but.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Paul, I don't recall that we've ever given up any alleyway except to allow for additional space, you know, to get into the setback. I don't think we've done that.
Typically, the applicants have a reason.
Yeah.
You're right. I mean, typically, it's a swimming pool in addition to the property, trying to resolve a, y'all had one that was, was resolving a construction issue that came up when they were trying to, to, well, to resolve an issue where they were, buildings were built in the alleyways.
I mean, if we kind of go, normally, I say normally, what I've seen us do is go where we'll, we'll kind of give up, you know, to the center line of the alleyway, and then, then when you measure the setback, go back in, you know, it gives them that extra room. Somebody wants to build a pool on the property, it's going to be on their property, but by the time they get the pool built, it may be a couple of feet within the setback. We can, we can help them out. We don't give any, we don't really give up anything in the alleyways so much as, you know, but, I mean, we do, but we don't. We don't allow them to build in the portion that we give up. I just don't recall us doing that. I hear what Commissioner Murphy's saying, you know, sounds like, you know, it worked, it could work okay if we had to get in there and go tell the owner, "We got to take your fence down," but then he may not be so compliant at the time. Then we find ourselves in a battle. Well, is that a condition of the abandonment? Are you suggesting that that would be a condition of the abandonment? Yeah, couldn't we just make that a condition?
I'm not sure what a condition of the abandonment means. From a legal perspective, is that a restriction on the deed? And if you would like, I can give you a quick overview of what we're thinking about with the property, if that helps alleviate maybe Commissioner Browning's questions. We've held off on doing anything. It's a 19, what, 70s, I guess, mid 70s house. It, we have plenty of setback right now. I have the plat, should you want to see it, but I think at the closest to the property line, we're about 20 feet, give or take. We have a very, very large old live oak in the backyard. If we're going to put a pool in there, we don't want to dig close to the roots and kill the tree if at all possible. We've held off until the new FEMA maps came out. Because of the 50% rule, we weren't able to modify the house at all because of the 50% rule and the fact that it was at the AE 11 rate. Now, we're looking at a renovation of the house, and with that, we would want to do a pool at some point, I presume. We don't have kids that are in the house or grandkids yet, but the more we stay and the warmer it gets, pools are a nice thing to have around here. So, that's our plans. We don't, you know, we held off. We didn't want to tear it down and build a McMansion like is typically done with these houses now, but with these small eight-foot plate heights and a quarter-inch plumbing, you can't run a sink and shower at the same time. So there has to be things to bring the house up to current considered, what are, what are considered current living standards. So that's what we were doing. But, you know, if we can figure out a way of doing it as a condition, that we would give you the drainage easement so that you need it in the, in the future, that, you know, I'm happy to do that, but I'm not sure what that technically means or legally means.
We could do that. I know we could do that if we want to, but we've had some, we've had people that got into the setback with structures, and we made them remove them, and, and I just have a problem. I personally have a problem, I say personally as a Commissioner, I have a problem with being in favor of this. Got a great, got a great reason to do it. You do. But, 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 you know, I just feel like if I say, "Okay, in this case, we'll do it," I'm going to have to say yes to everybody else that comes up with any kind of a good reason. And so far, as long as I can remember, we have not, we have not allowed any building in the alleyways that we've given up, the portion that we've given up. And in fact, we have come to learn that some people have got into those, some alleyways in some places, and we made them remove what they put in there. And, and short of even giving up some land outside of a parcel of property where somebody lived, folks have got into the setback, and we have, talking about just a setback, forget about giving up some kind of alleyway next to it to make things right. We have made, we've made some folks who were just inches within the setback, remove what they had built in there. And so I just, I'm not going, I'll just tell you, I'm not going to be able to support it tonight. Of course, I'm only one vote, but I wish I could, but I'm just not going to be able to support it, so. All right. Any, any other questions for the applicant?
So if he builds the fence and refuses to take it down, can we take it down anyway if we need to?
Commissioner, it depends on what kind of conditions you place on the, on the abandonment. So if you reserve the right to do that as needed, then I think you, you reserve the ability to do that. If you don't reserve it tonight, then I think you lose the, the ability to dictate that, and you'd have to ask permission to be able to do that in the future.
All right. Any other questions for the, for the applicant?
I would only ask that if the vote is going to be a no, if we can defer the process until we can maybe figure out something, solution, but I would hope that we can have a positive outcome tonight. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the application? Peter, I'm sorry, Commissioner, do you...
Hugh Bork, I'm a resident on the island. Gentlemen, this one seems to be common sense. If you go ahead and state what your conditions are for the county abandonment, and even put some language, and I'm not doing the lawyer's job, but say removable structures such as fences, i.e. excluding swimming pools and other very intrusive pieces, you're going to run the gentleman's property, if he does what he says he's doing. I've never met the gentleman, don't know him from anybody else on the island. It seems like this would be a fair thing to do to help this particular case. But also ask the question, I've been to a number of these meetings, it looks like about every three out of four, we talk about abandonment of something over on East Beach, mostly different parcels similar to this. Would it not be the right thing to go off and take a look at this in a global sense and see what we can and can't do based on the, on the county engineering's needs as opposed to doing piecemeal? So, and to your point, Mr. Browning, my recollection, granted you've had a longer tenure here, is the ones that we were, that were ruled against the petition to abandon, they had gone ahead and built structures in the area without, they were asking for forgiveness for the most part. Those are the ones that I recall. You guys have a better record. This gentleman's come straightforward, put a proposal together, fairly reasonable proposal. I suggest you go ahead and deal, and granting the permission with some appropriate caveats that says, hey, it's on him if he's got to take it out to go do easement, let him take the risk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bork. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the application? All right. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Julian Smith. I sympathize with Mr. and Mrs. Dykes, who bought their house on 10th Street in 2015, and perhaps later discovered that they were maintaining landscaping on what the, what is county property. And they're trying to do the right thing by asking for the county to abandon this property. But I want to call your attention to some problems with the information that has been provided to you by Mr. Andrews, the county engineer, in his memo regarding this application. The agenda statement invites you to, quote, "Consider the application for abandonment of a portion of the unopened alley right-of-way." Please note that word, "unopened." That word is incorrect because the alley right-of-way, which was once open, has been closed to public access for private purposes. Now, as I speak, please take a look at the revision I made to that portion of the location map for the block where these rights-of-way are. In his opening paragraph, Mr. Andrews refers not to an unopened alley right-of-way, but to one that is, in his words, quote, "unopened." He's correct. It's unopened, even though there's no such word. And the purpose of this application is to keep it unopened, to keep it closed to public access. Under present use of right-of-way, Mr. Andrews states that this section of alley is currently not improved for public access. I agree with him. Public access has been blocked by private landscaping and a fence and part of a garage and the corners of houses, et cetera, et cetera, all through this block. Under past history, Mr. Andrews states this section of the alley has been used, as it currently is, for several years. I agree. Based on the bushes and other mature vegetation, it has clearly been used for private purposes for more than several years. And this application, if you approve it, will make that all kosher. Under past history, Mr. Andrews states, "There is no evidence of the alley having been open for public access." I cannot agree. The East Beach subdivision was laid out in the early 1920s with public alleys behind most houses. Those alleys allowed homeowners access to their backyards and garages. Mr. Andrews has simply ignored the historical purpose of the alleys. Under benefit to public in continuing usage, Mr. Andrews states, "The public, the public will continue to benefit from the ability to use the right-of-way for access and/or utilities." But the public does not currently benefit from this blocked right-of-way in terms of access, and the only access would lead to yet another blocked section of the alley that has been removed from public access for private use. If you go to the top of the second page of Mr. Andrews' memo, you will find a history of the effort that began in March of 2016, more than two years ago, when four different property owners, four different abutters to the alley in question, first applied for abandonment. Three of those abutting property owners referred to in the memo, Chula, Cantor, and Jacobs, according to Mr. Andrews' memo, did not agree to the county, quote, "Retaining a drainage easement for the county to use in the future," unquote. And they withdrew their applications. A lot of staff time and effort has gone into bringing this application to you, and if you understand the revised location map I provided to you, you should be able to understand there's a much bigger issue here than the application for abandonment of slightly more than 800 square feet of county property. You will see that the revised location map I provided you shows that more than a quarter acre of county right-of-way has been removed from public access for private purposes, has been closed. These owners are not applying for abandonment. They have already taken the land, and this is something that's happening in other parts of East Beach and other parts of the county, that you, or your staff, or the county, or some abstraction, has abandoned public property unofficially.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the application?
Mr. Chairman, before I begin, could I have Mr. Andrews put us on the plat that was offered in the packet?
I'll let him do that if you will identify yourself for the record.
I will indeed. Yes, that's perfect, right there. Lisa Norton. Gentlemen, what you're looking at is a copy of a plat that was prepared by Charles Johnson in 2016, and it is included in your packet. This controversy has been brewing since March 30th of 2016, and the packet states that staff was not able to recommend that the board approve the request as submitted since it would have resulted in a portion of the alley right-of-way that is remaining having no public access. And I offer to you that if you approve this abandonment, that you will cut off access on this end of the alleyway because the property owner directly across, on the far right, the ponder property, the large square, has got a fence that abuts out. According to the tax assessor's office, this alleyway is currently open to the public, but because the property across from Mr. Dykes has a fence on two sides of the far right-hand corner, that alleyway entrance is bottlenecked, and if you, if you allow this abandonment, it will be, the alley will be closed from this end. Now, I'm not surprised that Mr. Mattingly and Mr. Siella, Mr. Cantor, and Mr. Jacobs dropped from this application, and the reason why, and I have highlighted the alley in green, and you will see red on here because there are already three homeowners among these six parcels, that's 50%, that have already erected a fence, and if you look at the little gray square on the left top property, that is a garage that extends into the alley. So, this will block an alley that is already bottlenecked, if you agree to this. There are numerous other property owners, direct neighbors of Mr. Dykes, who decided to withdraw, and those include 4323, 10th Street, which is the top left-hand corner. Next to him is Mr. Mattingly in the center, 4315, 10th Street, and then you have Mr. Dykes' property on the far top right. And if you come back over to the far left on the bottom of the alley, you have Mr. Cantor's property, then you have Bruce Jacobs, and then you have Charles Ponder in the bottom right-hand corner. Since code enforcement is complaint-driven, I would like to see the commissioners encourage the department to notify code enforcement to seek the legality of the encumbrances of the garage, the multiple fences, and other obstructions in the county-owned right-of-way, and have the alley restored if the property owners do not have valid abandonment agreements. According to the tax assessor's office, as I stated, the alley is presently open. The value of the property is that it belongs to the taxpayers, and it is an alley for public use. And I believe that closing this alley will be an issue in case you do have a need for drainage or public use for evacuations or emergency vehicles, and I think it will set a precedent that will flood this commission with other abandonments. So as a taxpayer, as a resident, and a citizen of Glen County, I ask that you deny the applicant's request, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Norton. Any, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing and hearing none. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve AB 3231 for the abandonment of a portion of an unopened alleyway of the Block 17, East Beach subdivision, with the caveat that if Mr. Dykes would agree to present a letter to the county, as far as, would that be appropriate, Mr.?
I think we'd have to work it out as far as there being a, an absolute, if this is what y'all want to do, an absolute right to be able to go in if needed. Otherwise, I think you're just asking permission at that point, which can be granted or denied. So we'd have to work that out as part of the abandonment, but if that's the condition y'all want to place on it. And of course, I think, you know, the applicant would have to say, yes, that's agreeable to even have that work in that manner.
It's agreeable, and I'd be more than happy to work with the county attorney or whomever you all appoint to work with me to come up with a solution, and we won't do anything until we have an agreement such as that.
I'm not sure about the motion, Counselor.
So, if I understand correctly, I mean, just to make sure I understand that the, you know, the abandonment would be approved, he would be allowed to put a fence up, but if the county ever came back at a future date and saying, "We need this area for drainage," the county would have a right to have the fence removed? That's not what, exactly what that is, because I think as currently recommended, he would not be able to build or put the fence within it. But as I just stated, that would be, that would be an amendment to that, that recommended motion.
So we could, in the motion, we could put our right to go back?
That would be, if that's what y'all want to do, that would be my recommendation.
Is that what you were saying, Richard?
Would you restate the motion, Commissioner Strickland?
I'm not sure what you want now, here.
So, if that's what you want to do, I guess the recommended motion would be a motion to approve the abandonment, subject to the applicant and then the county attorney working out an agreement wherein the county can come back at its choosing to, to put a drainage facility in there and remove the fence.
Okay. That's the motion.
The county has, the county has the right to come in and...
That's correct.
Okay, that's the motion.
All right, okay. That's for the whole of the area, for, requesting for abandonment?
That's, that's correct. That's how I understand it.
So the not development in any of that area where we're abandoning would be held out for some future if the county needed it to come back, that whole 10-foot that would be abandoned?
That's correct, except for I think what they're, they would like to see happen is he can put a fence up tempor, or in the meantime, until, if and until the county would ever need to use it for, for drainage purposes.
Yes.
All right, have a motion?
I have a second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve the abandonment with the county's right to come in at, if necessary, and remove the, any improvement in the right-of-way, signified by erasing the right-hand? Those opposed? Okay, 4 to 1. Good luck to you, sir. ZM 3691, 1001 Plantation Isles Boulevard, consider request to rezone approximately 233 acres located at 1001 Plantation Isles Boulevard from planned development, PD to Forest Agriculture, to allow agricultural and mining uses on the property. Parcel ID 03-22251 and 0327070, Keith Ross, Coastal R&amp;R Incorporated and Ridge Enterprises, Inc., owner and applicant. Ms. Lee?
Good evening, Commissioners. Stephanie Lee, Planning Manager. So this is ZM 3691, and the owner and the applicant is Keith Ross. This is a large tract, it's 233 acres at 1001 Plantation Drive. The property is currently planned development. There were a couple amendments to this planned development text in the 90s, and there has been some development on this property, but it's largely currently undeveloped. The existing land use is primarily undeveloped. There is an operating surface mine on the property at this time. The applicant is proposing to rezone this property to Forest Agricultural, and the, and to continue mining operation as well as have agricultural operations on this property as well. And the comprehensive plan, future land use designation, is low-density residential and rural overlay. Where the star is located is, is the property. There's two, two parcel ID numbers in the 233-acre tract. This is Golden Isles Parkway, so this is the very northern terminus of Golden Isles Parkway. There is some residential, there's a duplex development and some single family in this area, but most of it, as you can tell, is not, not developed. There's some photos. The property is a little tricky to get to, but these are looking south on Golden Isles Parkway. The subject property is on your left in this photo. And this is where Plantation Isles Boulevard basically, basically ends. This is the gravel, started the gravel driveway into the property. And then as you're heading up Plantation Isles Boulevard, this is the residential development that you would pass by on your way into the property. As I mentioned, they are looking to continue the surface mine operation and have agricultural This is a, showing the property, some of the current uses on there and some of the topography and, oops, sorry. So this is a survey of the property showing what's there. And this is some of the considerations that the Board of Commissioners would, would look at in determining if this rezone is appropriate for this area. So currently, as I mentioned, there is a PD on this property, there's a mix of uses that are allowed, but most of it has not been developed to the full extent, as outlined in the PD. And the future land use map is low-density residential and rural overlay, and so rezoning to FA would be compliant with the future land use designation. And just for your information, the FA zoning is low-density, it's really our lowest, one of our lowest-density zones, and there's, would allow one unit per 20,000 square feet if there were residential units built upon here. So this is just a zoom-in of the future land use map from the comp plan. The star indicates where the property is located, and all of this kind of khaki area with the dots is the rural area and the low-density residential. Just a few more of your considerations for tonight. The Mail and Planning Commission did hear this application and hold a public hearing on March 20th, 2018, and they recommended to the Board of Commissioners approval of the application. Four commissioners were in favor of approving it. Four commissioners weren't in favor of approving it. One commissioner, Commissioner Lee, was opposed. And then one commissioner, Chairman Level, abstained. And then we had one commissioner absent that evening. So, but they did recommend approval. And the recommended motion is here on the screen for you to approve ZM 3691 to rezone the property from PD to FA. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. And I know the applicant is also here this evening.
Questions for staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is off Highway 99. It's not off the spur, is it? It's off Highway 99.
It covers a large area, so it can be accessed off of 99 as well as off of Golden Isles Parkway. So you can get to it from two different locations. But it is the very northern end of Golden Isles Parkway. And Plantation Isles Boulevard, which is the official address, does come off of Golden Isles Parkway.
Okay, you showed a, I guess, a development in there? I'm assuming that what they're talking about doing is making, you know, using this for a borrow pit, what we call a borrow pit. Have you had any discussions with them? And I guess if they're here tonight, we could find out. But if it's going to be used as a borrow pit, in other words, you're going to have dump trucks loaded with dirt? Are they going to have to go through that neighborhood? You know, I want to know that, because I have enough phone calls from out in District 1 from dump truck drivers hauling field dirt, which I have no basic problem with. But they're not staying on the road. They're tearing up our roads. They're causing us more problems than I think it's worth. And I get complaints from homeowners where their road is tore up coming off of arterial road going into the neighborhood because they dump trucks or cutting the corners and just making a mess. And I think Dave Austin is tired of me calling him. And I don't think the taxpayers ought to have to go out there and keep repairing these roads because of... Somebody wants to have a borrow pit and haul dirt. And then the dirt in the neighborhood, the dust problem, and the noise, some of them all hours of the night, it seems like, out there digging dirt after sundown. We got a big issue here, and I'm kind of glad this just come up today so we can talk about it. But I am not ready to be in favor of it until I find out just what in the world is going on out there. I have no problem with borrow pits. You know, we live in a very low area here. You have to build up. We have to have field dirt for that. That's all part of it. I'm for that. But if we don't establish some rules here tonight, and I know we're not going to be able to, we need to really sit down and have a workshop and establish some rules about dump trucks going through neighborhoods. I don't care what they're hauling. You know, we need to establish some rules, and I'm just kind of getting on a high horse. But, and the other, my other problem is it's a downzoning. I've just kind of made my mind up. I am not going for downzoning. I'm going to try to straighten up District 1 if I can. You know, when we go to FA to something higher, I'm going to be hard-pressed to go to a downzoning. So that's all I've got to say until we get the applicant up.
Yeah, and those are very valid concerns. And actually, the applicant did address the Mail and Planning Commission and talked about some of the plans he does have to address those very concerns. So if you would like to hear from him in a little bit tonight, I'm sure he'd be happy to talk more about what he wants to do to address those.
Any other questions for staff? All right, those, anyone, this is a public hearing item. Anyone wishing to come in? I'm fixing to get him right now. Would the applicant come forward? State your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Keith Ross, and I'm the owner of Ridge Enterprises and Coastal R&amp;R. It is a sort of large tract. And the reason that we had to acquire more property to suffice Commissioner Brown's request is because I'm the same way. It's got a long history of a lot of many years and a lot of dollars that's been wasted out here. It is off of Golden Isles Parkway Extension. You cross over 99 on a Golden Isles Parkway Extension, go down about three and a half miles. And the little corner there where the red is, that is going to be the access into the total 233 acres that have the sand mining operations on. That'll be our road, a private road. We won't be in anybody's hair anymore. That's the reason I bought that. I used to own those subdivisions that we're talking about coming through. That is a county road that we're going through that accesses the subdivisions. But the road that we have been traveling on in the past is actually a county road with a 35 mile an hour speed zone there. But we've never had a lot of complaints, if any, that we've not addressed with the homeowners out there. Most of them know me. We also have an alternative access. We don't even go through there anymore. We come off of 99 through an access with Terry Driggers to the backside of that big blue pit that you see on the screen right there. So we're not even running through there. In the future, we will have our own private road. We won't be in anybody's hair.
Yeah, have, I don't know if you have trucks or if it's independent contractors hauling from...
We have both.
But I bet you some of your dirt and possibly from your other pits have gone down Green Swamp Road and Green Cove Street.
I'm sure.
Yeah, and I'm sure they're part of the problem that I've been getting phone calls from. And they don't care. These truck drivers don't care. And I wouldn't care either if nobody didn't come out and say something to me. And you have had problems, because I'm here telling you about them. You have had problems because I've got the phone calls. You may not have got the phone calls, and you may not have got them from a particular subdivision, because these people don't know where they're coming from. But I know where they're coming from. I've been here all my life. I know where the pits are. I know where your pits are. And I know where the dirt's coming from. And you have had problems. You are creating problems.
I've not had those calls.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'm here to tell you tonight, you've been creating problems, and we need to work together to fix them, okay?
That's why I bought the other property.
Yeah, well, okay, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate the fact that you've got an access road that's not going to go through the neighborhood. But I'm telling you, I'm going to push it. We got to come up with some rules about how, you know, construction and where vehicles going into neighborhoods, and we're going to have to allow that. You know, I mean, you've got lots in these neighborhoods.
There's a whole lot of problems with dirt, period. I mean, you get in a subdivision, and you're carrying dirt to a builder, and he doesn't have a construction entrance in with no rock on the road. Then there's going to get dirt on the road. And whose fault is that? Is that my fault? It's his fault.
Well, we all party to it. We do. And look, I hadn't called you out to anybody that calls me. But I'm just glad that you're here tonight. We can talk about it.
And that was the reason that we are doing what we're doing, and that's why we bought the property. And we will be on our own road. We own everything.
Let me ask you this. What kind of hours of operation would you have?
We start at 7:00 and run to 5:00 most days.
Saturdays and Sundays too, included?
We work some Saturdays and some Sundays. There's a gentleman that works with me that comes out there on Sundays sometimes and cleans up and does stuff.
Yeah, okay. What is the anticipated length of your, that you're going to dig?
Years.
Years?
I mean, there's just, there's going to continue to be a need for borrow in Glen County as more development is done, as more houses are built. I mean, you know, it's just part of it.
It is. It is. I recognize that. Like I say, we're low. Most lots that are built on, just got to have some field dirt. And so we have to have these borrow pits. But I just think we could, all of us, could do better.
I understand. And that's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, Mr. Ross. Anyone else like to speak in favor of the application? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Well, if no one else will.
I'm Julian Smith. I have walked this, parts of this area a number of times in the last four years. I've watched the digging of the borrow pit on the southeast part of the property. I've flown over it twice with James Holland as he risked his life taking pictures. This is a very sad situation you have before you. And if you go to Item 6 in the staff report, we're told that staff is not aware of any existing or changing conditions affecting the use and development of the property. Well, staff is apparently unaware that we had a major real estate disaster about 10 years ago. This area was approved back in the, what, in the '90s for planned development in a time of booming optimism, in a time when the county extended Golden Isles Parkway out to where it now ends near this property. The county extended water lines and sewer lines that are not being used, built a pumping station. Oh, there may be some use, because there is a little development out there. But this planned development was part of a grandiose plan for how the county was going to develop to the west. Before you make a decision on this, you really need to go out there and look at the property. Look at the abandoned equipment. Look at the piles of broken concrete slab and asphalt that have been hauled in from other places. Look at the number of abandoned vehicles and equipment and trailers. It is a mess. Now, that mess is located, is restricted to the area on the southeast side of the property. But in time, the mess will, I'm sure, expand, particularly if you allow this change. You are, if you approve this zoning change, you are opening up 233 acres to a maze of amazing and contradictory uses, including trailer homes, elder care facilities. Who wants to put, FA allows that. So let me, let me talk to you briefly about the meaning of FA. At the end of the Island Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday night, now this is relevant, after the site plan application for the event venue out on Lawrence Road was denied, the applicant came up to me, and she said she was going to buy the property, even though her site plan application was denied. And even though you had agreed the week before, or two weeks ago, to the special use permit for an event venue there, the IPC had recommended you not do that. The IPC turned down the site plan. Where am I going with this? So the applicant, very nice lady, came up to me, and she said, "I'm going to buy it, and if, because the zoning is FA right now, I can clear-cut it. I can take down every tree. I can do anything I want." That's the problem with FA. FA seems to stand for forest agriculture, but it really stands for, well, freaking awful. Freaking awful. Thank you. Please don't do this.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the application? All right, hearing none. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve ZM 3691.
All right, have a motion? Have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Steph. Voting to downzone this track. How much of, you know, the FA, how much of that track? What's the total size of that track again?
Sure, the total size is 233 acres.
233, and having any idea how large the borrow pit may be?
I do not know the size offhand. The applicant may know the size if you'd like to guess that.
Sounds like it's going to grow.
At the end of the day.
At the end of the day, it's going to grow.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, I would question FA as downzoning. I sort of agree with Mr. Smith. That's, FA is really not downzoning in my estimation. But I think this is, this is a reasonable proposition here, and particularly in light of the fact that the traffic is going to be removed from anything close to residential development. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor of the application, approval of the application?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Because I'm not certain about this. And the, and the way he has it designed, there would be no possibility for trucks going through the residential area.
So currently, the roads do exist, so, I mean, there would still be that possibility, although he has stated that he would be changing the, having a new roadway to access those. I'm sure, you know, well, I won't speak for the applicant, but that could be something you would, could ask if that access could no longer be used for...
We could limit the egress-ingress.
Yeah, I would require that, because I get them coming through my neighborhood all the time for different reasons. And it's just, it is tearing up the street. And it's dangerous for the children. So, I mean, may not be as many folk out there as it is in my neighborhood. Yeah, is there a way to limit that as part of the motion?
Yeah, you want to make an amendment to the motion? That the egress-ingress is restricted to his act?
Yeah, that's fine. I'm agreed.
Well, I think we need to vote on it.
If there's no objection from the other commissioners, you don't have to vote on that amendment. Accept the amendment as made and second it.
Okay.
And just to be clear, that is just restrictive to the truck traffic. Now, if there were vehicles accessing the property, they could still come off of Plantation Isles Boulevard? Is it primarily the borrow pit, truck traffic?
However, Commissioner, I would recommend that you restate the motion as intended, just for the record.
All right, Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve ZM 3691 with the understanding that Mr. Ross limit the access of the 233 acres not through the subdivisions that are along there. Is that kind of what you wanted?
That's correct, and that's an amendment to the prior motion.
I think we want a specific egress-ingress on his road.
I think that's correct.
Okay. Okay. Egress-ingress off of 99.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I had seconded earlier.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of ZM 3691? Yes, sir?
Just want to be clear on the motion. If I heard Commissioner Strickland or someone say off Highway 99, I'm not sure that's where the access is. I understand the access to be, if we're looking at the screen on the left-hand side where the small red area is, which comes directly to Golden Isles Parkway.
I don't think so. Mr. Ross, does it come off of 99 or Glenco Parkway?
It'll be the new road that we're going to put...
It'll be, the, the new road that we're going to put in will be coming off of Golden Isles Parkway Extension. It's coming in that, that road that you see going through between those two red lines right there.
I'm sorry, I thought it was, I thought you were coming off 99.
We are, currently, we are coming off of 99 that comes into the, to one of the old timber roads that comes into the back of the big lake right there, where she just, yeah, where she just had the corner.
Can you point to the new acre?
Yep, the new, yeah, I'm not much of a, my, the new access is going to come in here just like this.
Okay.
This will be a private road all the way to, to the whole property. Right now, we're coming in off of 99 and coming into the back of the property, right across from Grant's Ferry subdivision off of 99. Yes, this, this road right here will be put in within the end of the year. This road will all be, be put in, only, we will only be using our own road, period. There is an access easement that carries us through around, this is the road I was talking about with a 25 mile an hour speed, speed limit. Whenever you come right here, this right here is an access easement that was approved with DNR to come into the property this way. We've already stopped doing this. We come in off of 99.
Sir?
So there's both Barrow pit?
This, this is, these are active sand mines right here, these three. These right here are approved with EPV and DNR. We just, we're not starting these until we get this road in. We won't be owning all this too. And we don't come through here and go in this way. Like I said, we have an easement to go in this way, but we, we're not even doing that. We stopped all that. Once this started getting built out, we, I've got kids, I'm not, you know, we don't want to drive trucks through.
Yeah, Mr. Ross, you understand going forward that egress and ingress is going to be off that private road, off the Golden Isles Extension?
Exactly.
And that will be limited to that, off the Golden Isles Extension, that private road?
Right.
That is what this motion is?
Right. But until we get this road in, we're coming off of 99 through the middle of the woods. I mean, we're not on, we're not, we're not coming through here.
You'll be nowhere around those subdivisions.
No, sir.
But you're...
Okay. This, this road, Mr. Brunson, has to be built. This, this is, this is, this is my drawing right now. This road has to be built right there. There's a gate right there, but I've got to put in box culverts and cross, cross right there and build this road in this way. But we come in off of 99 and come in this way now. We don't come through this. We don't travel there.
Pardon me. Were you talking about putting, putting the road in?
Yes, sir.
Those lots that are laid out, are there homes there now?
Here?
No, yeah, yeah, right, right there.
Right here?
Are there homes there now?
There is some homes right here, yeah.
Yeah, how far?
And I own all this. I own that, that, that.
Okay, well, that's good.
And all this.
All right, but those homes, where those people are sitting there right off the Parkway and where you proposed to put a road, how far are those homes from that proposed road?
That's a thou, over a thousand, probably 2,000 feet.
2,000 feet?
This is 750 feet right here.
Yeah. I was just concerned about...
There's a big wetland in between this. This is not going to be developed. This is, see, this part right here, Mr. Browning, those two parts are actually in a phase two development that was planned, you know, to add more lots into this subdivision.
Yeah. Going back over here, where you're going in now with 99, why don't you want to continue doing that?
We are going to continue doing that until I get my own road in here. I don't, this eventually could be sold right here because Terry Drigger's owns it. Right now, I'm giving him access to get to his property on part of my road to get to his property, and he's giving me access through here so I don't have to come through here anymore.
Which is, which is already zoned FA?
Yes, sir.
It, so it's FA, so you, you can do whatever.
Right.
Yeah.
Commissioners, if I can ask a question real quick, so I understand, how long do you anticipate using 99 until the new road is built?
By the end of the year, we'll have the new road. We will be on it all, it will be on our own private property completely.
Okay, so what you're using now, some of that is Drigger's property?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Exactly, yes. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I've given him, him access through, he's part of my roads, he is, he has to come through part of my road to get his property, I got to come through part of his road, so we just worked it out. And when I get this road in, then it's going to tie in and then he will, won't interfere with him. We've been working on this for several years to try to get these things resolved because I used to own all that out there and it's, it's all complicated.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Thank you.
Commissioners, if I may, I, I think there's just confusion as to what the existing motion is. If I can recommend that we just withdraw the existing motion by the maker of the motion, if there's no objection, then it's withdrawn, and just make a brand-new motion that's clarified as to what the terms are and conditions are.
I think that's a good idea. We'll get a motion to, we need a...
Well, if the maker of the motion is the one withdrawing it and everyone is agreeable, I think the motion is just withdrawn without, without the need to formally vote on that.
Yeah. Withdrawn the motion.
Motion to withdraw. Get a second. All right, any discussion? All those in favor of withdrawing the original motion, signify by raising your right hand. All right. The new, new motion, careful, please.
I'm not sure what the heck I want.
Commissioners, if I may, I may be able to help out with that. That is a motion to approve the proposed rezoning subject to use being, I'm sorry, access being on Highway 99 solely until the end of the year with access thereafter being on Golden Isles Parkway solely to be, well, the, yeah, solely accessed through the new driveway or access after the first year.
To the private road.
That's right.
That's my motion. Second to that motion?
I'll second his motion.
Motion's taken. Any discussion? All right, the motion, the motion is this, that current access will be off, off of Highway 99 as it is now into the, into the, and this is discussion, it's not a motion, that, that it will be into the property that is owned, forest agriculture presently, that going forward, that egress and ingress will be off of the private road, off of the Golden Isles Parkway Extension, and that he will be restricted to egress and ingress on that road. And that, that's where we are, I think, as far as the discussion.
That's, that's correct.
All right, any, any further discussion?
Commissioner Browning, are you satisfied with the discussion and the amendment to the original?
I am, Commissioner Murphy. Thank you.
All right, all those, any further discussion? All those in favor of ZM 3691, motion, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Good luck, Mr. Ross. ZM 3715, 136 Glendale Drive, consider request to rezone approximately 2.96 acres located at 136 Glendale Drive from R9, one-family residential to MR, medium residential to allow for two-family duplex dwelling units, parcel ID 03-03659, Jonathan Roberts, PE Roberts, Civil Engineering, PC, authorized agent for Clint Miller, owner and applicant, Ms. Lee.
Thank you. ZM 3715, this is 136 Glendale Drive. This is a 2.96 acre parcel, and it is currently R9, one-family residential, and it is currently a vacant parcel, undeveloped. The proposed zoning is medium residential, and they, the applicant is proposing two-family or duplex dwelling units on this property. And the comprehensive plan, future land use designation is community mixed-use center, also called a village. So this is the property here with a star. This is 341 right here, and this goes Glendale Drive. And just to kind of orient you a little bit to other uses in this area, this is a subject parcel here. This is R9 zone, R9 zoning adjacent to it. As you come towards 341, this is freeway commercial. Then there's an, also an office, office commercial, so there's a small office park in this location, just kind of catty corner from the subject property. There's also general commercial just down the street here. And then as you start to head this direction here, to the top, top right of the screen, this is limited industrial or light, limited industrial in this location. This is Rich's Foods, Diversified Fabricators is also in this location, so it's definitely a very, very diverse mix of uses in this area. This is a photo of looking northeast on Glendale Drive. This is a subject property on your right. This is currently just a kind of a dirt driveway access into the property. This is looking southwest on Glendale Drive towards Highway 341, and this is looking northeast on Glendale Drive. As I mentioned, the applicant is looking to rezone from R9 to MR. They, they are currently looking to, looking to have 24 duplex units, I'm sorry, 24 units on the property. There's going to be 12 separate buildings. Each of those buildings would have two units within each building. The R9 zone, the density allowed is currently one unit per 9,000 square feet. The MR zone maximum density, and this is the maximum, so this is the most dense it could be, is one unit per 2,000 square feet for townhouse units, but it also can go up to 8,000 square feet per unit for multi-family, so it just kind of depends on the type of unit that somebody is putting on this property. And just to note, the Community Development Department currently does have a site plan application in, for a 24-unit duplex project that pending this rezone would go before the Mainland Planning Commission. This is just their conceptual plan that they had submitted at the time of the rezone. There is a site plan that, that is more detailed than this, just to show you what they are looking to, to do on the site. This is Glendale Drive here, and they would have the units coming off this cul-de-sac As I mentioned, the uses are quite a mix in this area, so this is really is kind of a transitional zone. It's very close to the interchange with I-95 and 341 and the commercial uses and then transitioning from there. This property would remain residential in terms of the rezone. It wouldn't change the use, however, it would just be more dense than what would be currently allowed under the, under the R9. And just for kind of a comparison purposes, if the property was subdivided under R9 zoning, there would be potentially 12 to 14 units that could go on this property. And if it is rezoned to MR, and this is, again, the most dense, if there's 2,000 square feet per unit, there could be 62 to 64 units, but that would be the absolute max. And as I mentioned, applicant is looking to do only 24 on the site. And this is the future land use map. Where the star is located is this kind of village center around, around 341, interchange with I-95. So there, this is really kind of a, higher densities, commercial uses are appropriate for this area, so something like this could be appropriate for this area. Just some additional considerations for you to review in our senior staff report. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this application on March 20th, 2018, and they unanimously voted in favor of recommending approval of this rezone. We did have one commissioner absent that evening. One commissioner did mention, although he did vote in favor of the project, he was interested in seeing the density limited to the 24 units proposed, although that was not a condition added, it just was a comment made during, during discussion. So recommended motion is moved to approve as presented and rezone the subject property from R9 to MR, and I'm happy to answer any questions this evening.
Questions for staff. All right, it's a public hearing item, and we'll reverse the order here. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the zoning propos, the...
No, I have a vote being paid for.
No, sir. We're going to do in opposition. I think that's, the chair has that option, so, well, change it up, change it up a little bit.
I'm Julian Smith. I live on St. Simons. I have good news for you. This will be the last time I will speak to you tonight unless I run into you in a bar. This is, the bad news is this is the worst kind of rezoning. There is no necessity for, for doing this other than somebody has bought a really beautiful piece of property with lovely, mature live oaks, lovely azaleas. It's an idyllic site, and it's surrounded by an old residential neighborhood. And what you're being asked to do is to put the first wedge of higher density into an R9, one-family residential neighborhood and start the process of turning this into really shabby apartments. If you remember the layout for the lots, you've got 12 buildings, each with two units, six buildings on each side, perfectly straight road, everything, except for the back corner of the property, and there's no indication of what's going to happen there. So this, this is really an unnecessary development other than somebody bought it and he has a right to use the property as he wants if he can get a complacent government body to allow him to do it, and I'm sure you're going to allow him to do it. Consider that recently out on Glencoe Parkway, there, there is a new apartment complex with 395 units. There is no shortage of apartments in Glen County. So why are you doing this? I'm sorry, this, this is, if you approve this, I'll just have to keep coming back and ask you to stop doing things that are not necessary. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good night to you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the change of zoning? Seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the zoning change? Is the applicant, is the applicant here?
I do not see the applicant here this evening.
I don't either. All right. Anyone else wishing, wish to speak in favor of the application? All right, commissioners? We don't, we don't have a real deep bench here tonight, commissioners, so...
I'll make a motion to approve ZM 3715.
Have a motion to approve?
I'll second that.
A second? Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of ZM 3715, approval of ZM 3715, signify by raising your right hand? All those in opposition? Seven, all right, pass. Good luck to the applicant, wherever you are. All right, item number five, ZM 3685, 172 D's Drive, consider request to rezone approximately 1.7 acres located at 172 D's Drive from R9, one-family residential to MH9, one-family residential in order to allow a mobile home park. Parcel ID 03-04-7581 has a crews owner and applicant, Ms. Lee.
Thank you. This is ZM 3685, and this is 172 D's Drive out towards Blythe Island, and the area of the property is 1.7 acres. Currently, it's R9, one-family residential, and it is vacant, currently a vacant parcel. And the proposed zoning is MH9, one-family residential, which is a mobile home zoning, and the proposed land use is to continue residential but to allow a, a mobile home and the...
And the comprehensive future land use for this area, interestingly, is actually industrial as you're heading from 341 out to Blythe Island before you get to the island. This is Blythe Island Highway down at the bottom of your screen, and this is D's Drive. D's Drive is a dead-end road that kind of ends just past the, the top of the screen here. And where the star is located is the property. And just to kind of orient you to the other zoning in the area, the majority of D's Drive is R9 zoning. There is a couple parcels, well, one parcel that's FA, and then a couple parcels that are M20, which is not mobile home, but manufactured home zoning. And some of these parcels do not actually access D's Drive, but you can, you can see them from D's Drive, but you do see some mobile homes over in this area. There's one mobile, it's M9, I'm sorry, that's manufactured home as well. So you do see the manufactured homes from D's Drive, but not all of them access off of there. So that, the closest actual mobile home zoning, though, would, would be right here. This is Speedy Tostensen, and there's a mobile home park here. And there's also two smaller mobile home parks down towards the, down towards the bottom of your screen, kind of off the screen right here. So this is looking north on D's Drive. The subject property is on your right. This is looking north on D's Drive. The subject property is, is here. And looking south on D's Drive, the subject property would be right over in this location. Most of the uses are quite, a lot of things are very similar between R9 and MH9, but the primary one being mobile homes are not allowed in R9, but they are in MH9. The applicant had mentioned at the Mainland Planning Commission that his father owns this property, and they, they would like to see it, see it utilized, and they would like to place a mobile home on the property. This is a survey of the property. It does show that there's an existing, there was a house on the site that has been since removed, but this is a little bit older survey, so it doesn't, doesn't show, or shows the house still there. So these are your considerations. As I mentioned, there are some mobile homes that, or manufactured homes that are, are visible. There's approximately six that are visible, not all of them access. And there are about 30 dwelling units that are on D's Drive. But primarily, the, the area is R9 and single-family homes. These are just a few of your considerations. The property would remain residential, and it does have an economic use as residential at this time. And the future land use map, being industrial, really everything there would be not, not conforming with the industri, or the industrial zone, because that is a residential area. But interestingly, that is what the map says right here. So here is the future land use map. The star indicates where the location is off of D's Drive. And so this gray area is the industrial. The planning commission did hold a public hearing on March 20th, 2018. And this was actually a unanimous denial of this application. There were a number of comments that were shared by neighbors of the property, and they were in opposition, saying this is a single-family area, that they were not in favor of seeing a mobile home located on this street. And the commissioners shared some of those feelings, and so this was a denial, a recommendation for denial. And so the recommended motion to you this evening is to recommend denial of, or to deny ZM 3685 as presented. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I'm not sure if the applicant is here this evening.
Steph.
Yes, sir.
The staff is also denying approval of this, aren't they?
They can't deny it.
It is, yeah. Staff had recommended denial to the Mainland Planning Commission as well.
So they have 1.7 acres, and they want to put one mobile home on that?
That is what they have stated. I mean, they, they could come forward and request a subdivision of that, of that parcel to potentially do, do more than that, but that is what they've said is they want.
So that's where I'm heading. If, if we were to approve this, even though their request is for one family unit, would we be open the floodgates for multiple mobile homes in this 1.7 acres?
It potentially could occur. So they, they would be able to do 9,000 square foot lots within that.
So it would be a mobile home park, potentially.
It could, it could be a separate parcel of mobile homes. They would be limited to 9,000 square foot lots, but there would be multiple.
Rather than one, they'd have multiple in this residential area.
Potentially.
Right, thanks.
Any other questions for staff? All right, this is a public hearing item. Anyone wishing to come and speak in opposition to the application may do so at this time.
Hi. My name is Tim Harper. I, my brother and I own property 163 D's Drive, and the, the, the lady that presented is correct. My dad bought the property in the early 60s, and primarily, there's family houses, and you know, the neighbors and I feel like that, you know, this would just open the door for more trailers, more, more, you know, the avenue for more trailers, so the properties would be decreased. And that's the general synopsis of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the application?
I'm Vernon Cruz. I live at 173 and 179 D's Drive. Right across the road from it, we have two houses and five acres. If they put a trailer, it will reduce the value of our land. Our, their land and houses have been in our family for over 50 years.
But thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the application?
Good afternoon. I'm Judy Perry. I live at 176 D's Drive. My daughter lives at 170. We're, the property's right between us. We've worked really hard to try to bring our home up, and we're steadily making improvements. And we have talked to a lot of people, and a lot of appraisals, and they tell us that it will bring what we have put in our home now, down. And it will stay down, especially if a mobile home park can go right between our home. And I used to live in a trailer, so I don't have a problem with a trailer. That's why I chose to live where I do, because I finally have a home. And neighbors that care about what their property looks like, and want to make it better for our children and our grandchildren. And I just feel this would be a disaster. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the application?
Commissioners, I'd just remind you that in the preamble of the ordinance, it's incumbent upon the governing bodies of the county to help maintain, to the extent possible, the property values of the county. And as testified here, this apparently has some detrimental effect on the potential property values as we go forward. So I'd just remind you what the language in the county ordinance says. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bor. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the application?
Good evening. My name is Mark Shore. I live at 167 D's Drive. Back in the early 90s, we tried to do the same thing, and we were turned down. And at that point, I was young and dumb, and did not understand why. But now that I'm older and a little wiser, I understand why we need to keep it all standard homes out there. So I just hope you deny this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? The applicant is not here.
I just had a question for the applicant. I was wondering why, if he's wanting to rezone it and put a mobile home on there, why is there a for sale sign on the property?
Yeah, I'm not sure the answer to that.
Because I drove out there and walked through it and everything, and there's a for sale sign on it. So I'm a little, was wondering what was going on, so, anyway.
I know at the Mainland Planning Commission, he mentioned his father owned it, and they were looking for a use, so, you know, they might be just looking for different options for the property.
Any, anything else for staff? Is the applicant in here? Hearing none, if I could get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to deny ZM 3685.
Motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor of motion to deny, signify by raising your hand, that is unanimous. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept all items on consent agenda, general business, with the exception of any items any commissioner so wishes to pull.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would like to pull item number eight, please.
Okay. Number, number eight is pulled. All right, we have a motion to accept, all, a motion to second to accept those remaining agenda items. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, unanimous. Number eight, acknowledge a space use agreement between the Marshes of Glen libraries and the Library Guild of St. Simons Island, Inc., for the use of space at St. Simons Island Library Branch in the old casino building to conduct used book sales, with the net proceeds therefrom being donated to the MOGL for the use of the MOGL, St. Simons Public Library Branch. Commissioner Murphy?
Yeah, I, I asked this to be pulled on April 16th. I may have my date wrong. On April 14th, Mr. George Ragsdale sent a rather extensive letter to Pamela Thompson, copied Aaron Mumford, copied me, about this item that was on the consent agenda, and he was quite disturbed by this, and had three or four objections to it. And Pamela Thompson, Community Development Director, responded, saying she had nothing to do with that. Aaron Mumford.
Or in your statement to it.
Right. That it was prepared by the library director, Jerry Mullis. And before I have Ms. Mullis sort of clarify the issues that were raised, just want to remind everybody, this, this space that's being discussed tonight is over at the casino on St. Simons Island. It used to be the police substation over there. And about a, about a year ago, I think it was, could have been less time than that, I don't know. But I toured that area with Chief of Police and Ms. Mullins, and the, also the, the library director over on St. Simons, and Mr. Dave Austin. And the, the library director felt like this is a very important space for their use, and it was not being used as a police substation. So Mr., we all agreed it would be better served in, in the hands of the library. And Mr. Austin did a bang-up job with his, with his people getting it scrubbed up and shipshape, and, and now is a very functional space. At that time, the Literary Guild was using one of the three rooms as sort of a, a book area. I was somewhat taken by, by the appearance of that area. But with Mr. Ragsdale being intimately involved with Literary Guild, and having multiple concerns about this directive that was not written by Ms. Thompson, but was, in fact, written by Ms. Mullis, I thought it would be good to have her come up and to clarify for the record exactly her understanding of how this space, that is county property, will be used in the future. Thank you for coming.
Yes. Hey, guys. It's Derek. So we are very excited at the library to have this space, because I'm not sure how familiar you are with it, but the middle room, that's all brick and has the pretty windows to that awesome view, is going to become a meeting space for the library. We actually have our first meeting in there. We have a book club that's meeting next week. So we've gotten some tables, or a table and chairs in there. And then the office space is going to be some extra storage. And then the other room that the Literary Guild had been using for storage is what's going to be the book sale room. So we have a book sale room for the friends at the Brunswick Library, and that actually does very well. And we're hoping that the Literary Guild will also be able to make us some money. And all their proceeds go back to, the Literary Guild's proceeds go back to the St. Simons Library to buy books.
So you, you are satisfied that the current understanding between yourself and the Literary Guild, and the county attorney, and everybody else, that this space that has been recently renovated is being deployed for the appropriate purpose?
Yes, I am. It took, it took a good bit, but we got, we got there. And, and thanks to the county attorney, he did a lot of work. So I think that he definitely deserves a big round of applause and pat on the back.
Let's not, let's not go overboard here.
Yes, yes, okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Attorney, I've given you a hard time.
We're still trying to get an opinion out of him.
That's right. Do you have any clarifications for us, Mr. Attorney?
I, I don't, Commissioners. I think everything is in order for the board's consideration tonight.
Great. Well, if you're happy and the attorney's happy, I don't know how.
I'm not quite, yes. We got, we got the other party happy, too.
Okay, good.
So we're, we're all on the same page.
Is that a motion, Commissioner?
I don't know. What's the motion to, to, to accept item eight as, as written?
All right, I got a motion to second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of accepting item eight, taking five by raising your right hand, that is unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
As usual, you got your way. All right. The last item on the agenda is consider authorizing a payment of up to $93,580.45 to ADS Construction for current construction efforts, and the tax commissioner's office and the JFK Architecture, Inc., for the design of the entire renovation effort, with funding to be provided by the FY18 Capital Projects Fund. Mr. Austin?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I appreciate the, the opportunity to be up here, and the, and I appreciate that you put this on the, the meeting agenda for tonight. We have recently been involved in the construction effort down in the commissioner's office, and this action, or this action is to pay a contractor for the work he has done, and the work he still needs to complete, I call it phase one, and to pay the architect to finish the design on phase two. And then we will be back before the Finance Commission with a bid for phase two. So this doesn't, this is, doesn't pay for, doesn't pay for all the renovations in the tax commissioner's office. There are still some items that have to be designed, and bid, and awarded. But this, this would clear the decks for what we have right now.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Any questions? I think we've vetted this pretty well here.
Yeah, Mr., yeah, Mr. Chairman, I happen to think of one or two.
Looking forward to.
Director Austin, I'm glad to see you here. Who is this JFK architect?
That's James Kent.
Okay, yes, Kent.
He, uh.
Okay, was he consulted or used by the tax commissioner on the work that we're looking at paying? That's what we, you know, that.
Yes.
Okay, he was. Okay. Had he sent in any invoices?
I believe he had.
Okay. The three that you sent us, Mr. Manager, was, was one from him?
Commissioner Brownlee, no, no, sir. It's my understanding that Commissioner Chapman paid Mr. Kent out of his budget. As far as I know, it was not out of the capital project budget. I think that's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. That, that's my understanding, that he paid invoices, I think around $6,000 is what, what I remember from his budget.
Okay, fair enough. So, so we're going to, JFK architect is going to draw up plans to complete the work. Okay.
Exactly.
And we're going to go out for a bid. And we're going to go out for bid. Will ADS be allowed to bid? ADS Construction? They will be?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I mean, it's a fair, open bid.
Yeah. They, um...
I mean, I, I don't think, I don't know why they wouldn't be allowed to.
Well, I thought I heard that they had a, they didn't have to, they, they, they didn't have the proper license to even do that kind of work.
There, they, they have hired a general contractor to get the building permits. So, right now, we do not have the building permits, but once we approve the money, they will fund the permits and will fund the general contractor. So, will they be allowed to bid? No, the probably answer to that is no. They could, but they could do the work through a general contractor.
Okay. So, that's...
A GC will have to bid the job.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think there's still a, I think there's still a problem here with this contractor that came in our building. Okay, I mean, I'm ready to move on to the extent that we can. But Georgia has a licensing requirements. Okay, they're pretty strict and I understand that because I've got, I've got a few of them. And I, I'm, I'm just not comfortable with this Georgia state licensed contractor who it sounds like was not up to the requirements to do this kind of work and did it knowingly. If he has a license, he knows what he's licensed to do and what he can't do. And so, that's where, that's where my big problem still is. I mean, I've got some problems I'm not going to.
Well, part of this, part of this compensation is to pay a general contractor to oversee the rest of the work that needs to be done.
Who, and so, who, 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 who's going to pay him?
That's part of the $93,000.
As part of 93?
Yes, sir.
We're going to hire to, to, to oversee the balance of the work that's going to be done?
Correct.
So, the GC could really handle, hire anybody wanted to.
Well, well, is that not going to be bid out?
The work that's going to be finished, all right, is the work that, that has been started and that is, is within five days of finishing. And that work is going to be taken care of and a general contractor has to come in, pull the permit, and then he will manage that existing construction.
For that one?
Once that's wrapped up, we will, we will, we will go and move into phase two.
Okay, we go to phase two.
Yes, sir.
Now, do you have any idea what phase two is going to run?
I, I don't, but I think the scope is not that large.
Okay. And, and the reason I'm asking...
It's mainly, it's mainly fixing the counter spaces. But...
The, the, the reason I'm asking is because, you know, we budgeted $300,000 to, to do what the commissioner wanted. And now we're bumping up at 100, close to 100,000, but trying to get this finished, what, what, what he has already got started. So, you think we can get in and get out for another, less than 200?
We're confident that we can do that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, any further questions for staff? Thank you, Lord. This is not a public hearing item. Commissioners?
Second.
A motion to second. Any further discussion? All those in favor to move to authorize payment of 93,580.45 to ADS Construction for current construction efforts and the Tax Commissioner's Office and JFK Architecture for sign, renovation funding to be provided by FY Capital Fund, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, Lord. Any, we, we certainly don't have anything like litigation.
No, sir, not tonight.
Filed against the county. Get a motion to adjourn. We're out of here.